...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there an motion to approve the agenda?
Um, no, as I know that we approve the agenda with the following amendment, adding certifying classified personnel actions for consideration, item three.
So is that it? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, so there's... At this point, we just expect you to have a public comment. Joan.
I have other friends coming with me. As President of GCA this year, on your table and thing, we put a little note card that says, "Thank you for your service to USB 4.57 School Board." And that is felt deeply from the heart because you get paid real well. So, and we also have my Vice President, Mark Russo, and our Head Negotiator, Ronnie Knight, here as all representing GCA.
Laura's smiling, she knows what I have.
She's finally back at you.
So, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, because that's our five minutes. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Remember.
Those aren't all for you though.
I told you, like, that's not...
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to the Bernadine Sitz and Leadership Center, leadership, and Charles Stones, Leadership.
Yeah, I think hopefully we have, Barbara Poschjans here, Janet Smith are here. Some really great news, a few weeks ago, we learned that Bernadine Sitz and Charles Stones are coming off of focus school status. We also learned that the district will have no schools that are part of the Kansas Learning Network cohort for this coming year, so that's great. But we really, we invited Barb and Janet to bring their building leadership teams tonight and recognize their staff because it truly has been a great effort that they've put in, an awful lot of work, and we wanted to know how happy we are for them and how thankful we are about, for all the work. So Barb and Janet, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up and invite your staff to come up and introduce everybody.
Crystal, you're a part of this process. Not all of our team could be here, we hit with the flu and the colds and stuff, so the ones that could make it, Jean Juno's been on our team for, I don't even know if these people have been on the team.
Since before, it was the leadership team.
Probably five or six years. Dip Hornbeck represents, he does science, represents science and social studies, she represents the elective teachers, Rhonda Soto is our reading coach, Linda Finch just joined our team this year, she's excited, she's learning a little bit about our building, and then Crystal was our math coach for the last two years, and then the headship here stole her from us, so we've lost her. And the rest of the team isn't here tonight.
All right, Bernadine Sitz team, Karen Merle, of course, our Associate Principal, and Michelle Loff, who's representing fifth grade math, Paula Corby, our literacy coach, Penny Douglas, who represents our encore, Amanda Wilkinson, who is part of our special education team, Vestal Teeter, our fifth grade communication, and Jacob Huff, who represents our science and social studies, and Joan Nakuta, who represents our math, and we're missing our sixth grade communication, who isn't here, she knows, but... They've, most of them have been with us for quite some time, a couple new ones, but it's a lot of hard work, but we're very proud, very proud that we are no longer part of the focus school status, although it really worked in our favor.
Well, I'd have to say thank you on behalf of the board, that's an amazing effort, and I know it took some time, and a lot of people all contributed, so it is so nice to get to this point, to be glad to be able to be here and say that.
It was a whole staff effort, truly was.
Got a lot of help from him, his office, the office is here too, man's given many, many hours with us.
Well, we learned a lot. We did learn a lot.
We gave a lot from that process.
Yes, we did, and we helped to be able to carry that forward, so.
Well, it's really exciting bringing two schools, so, thank you. Would you come through as the...
I appreciate, I'm really pleased to be at my table. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we're moving on to the interpreters.
Right, and Leanne Rogers could share some information about this one.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our district interpreters, Mr. Van Nguyen, he translates for Vietnamese, Mrs. Martha Dela Cruz translates for Spanish, and Albert Jai is not here tonight, he's teaching a class at the college, but they go above and beyond the call of duty, they're always in classrooms, they're helping us with long-term hearings, they translate documents, they translate wherever they need, anytime we ask them to do something, they're always willing to do it. One of the things that they did on October 14th, when we knew that we wanted to introduce cultural diversity to our new teachers, they stepped up to the plate and they provided that in service, and we had such good reports from teachers, they were saying things like, "We wish we could have gotten this at the beginning of the year, we wish that we could have spent more time with them," and I learned a lot about them, they're very humorous, they were very entertaining, and they gave some good information, because it was right before parent teacher conferences, and they gave teachers hints on what to do, what not to do, as regards to parents, and what to expect and what not to expect, so it was very informational, and we couldn't do it without them because they're so valuable to us, so glad to recognize that.
Do you have any questions for them?
Can we wait for the presentation tomorrow? She said, "I didn't prepare a speech."
We really appreciate everything that you do, because we really couldn't do it without your help, we want to be able to make sure that we communicate effectively with all of our students and parents and community, and you're just the people that we need to be able to do that, so thank you so much, and we appreciate your dedication and time doing that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, this is Savannah, our therapy dog, this is my sis up, Jada Love Meyer, and we had a kindergartner come this year who struggled a little bit with coming to school, and one day as we were standing blocking the door, and Leanne and I were having a meeting outside the door, because we couldn't move, every time I moved, he would run to the front door, Jada came in and said, "How about I go get Savannah?" I was like, "Okay." And Savannah came to school for about three weeks, every day, and then we kind of weaved him down, and he now, most days, comes to school with a smile on his face, he even rides the bus now. We also have a first grader who gets to earn stickers, and then he gets to read a story to Savannah, and you will see some pictures of that in our movie, so Savannah is part of our staff, we love Savannah.
I had a mom come and thank me just the other day, because her daughter was scared to death of dogs, and Savannah's kind of got her over it, she says, "I appreciate that so much, now she'll pet a dog." Yeah, I said, "Well, she sets it, she wears on ya."
This is Rebecca Stevenson, my kindergarten teacher, Amanda Hands, K-11 first grade, Gillian Algrim is second grade, Betsy Love Meyer is my librarian, she is also on the site council, Regan McGraw has many, many, many hats, she's my instructional coach, pretty much whatever, if anybody needs, we holler for Regan. Linda Arts is the music teacher, Matt Paxton is my fifth, sixth grade communications teacher, Joe George is a parent on my site council, and Jenna Frye is also a parent on our site council, so, and we just have a short presentation, "A Day in the Life of a Plymouth Panther", we just thought we would let you kind of see what we're all about.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Can I sit there?
No.
Oh, there we go.
Hold it, just hold it.
Okay, we'll have to get through it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom.
Okay.
Maybe.
Can I sit there?
No.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Hold it, just hold it.
Okay, we'll have to get through it.
Okay.
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 Which is where all kids take the assessment from the same test bank. So then they have different questions, but as far as the level, it's all the same. And then the next three parts are adaptive. So based on that day one, the next three parts would adapt according to that. So math was four parts. We had a math performance task, which was new last year. A one-day constructive response type activity. I'm sorry, it wasn't constructive response. It was a multi-step continuation problem. Then the ELA, which was again four parts. The first one being they all took the same, again, different test items, the same level. The next four were adaptive. And then the MDPT, which was new last year, constructive response, and that was over two days.
I'm sorry, can you say what the ELA is? Is that simple?
Oh, sorry, English Language Arts.
Oh, right, okay.
And then they had a science, which was grades five, eight, and eleven. That was two parts. We have not received scores on that, and they're not going to release scores. It was kind of a pilot, collecting data from that. History government was also two parts. And then the KALPA, which is our ELA learners' test. They do, we have not received scores on that yet. We are still waiting. They keep pushing back when those will be released. They switch the platform, I believe is what they call it. So they're having delays in getting our results back.
And I might just jump in here too, that, you know, it's November and we're just now reporting scores that we took from last year. So the promptness in getting results back wasn't as timely as we would have liked to see what we could do with the results. So that's just something to consider as we're going through.
So when we're looking at comparing them, these are just some key points to keep in mind. The state released several, I might intend a couple webinars directed from, given from the state that kind of shared when we're comparing data, what we, how we should look at that. So these are just some takeaways from that. So before, since we're switching away from teaching to the test or being able to identify the specific things they're tested on, when we could do that, our, we're able to spike really high in our, from point A to point B. So our jump or our trend line is still going to continue to go up, but it won't be as drastic because we're not able to specifically identify those five things that there, that maybe they were tested on. We really would like to see at least three years of trend data at the state and our local level before we can start to identify the positive trends and also those negative trends. And right now, we just have two years. And then just something to keep in mind, the 2015, which is the first year data we'll look at, was not adaptive. So every kid took the assessment from the same test bank of questions. And then the second year was adaptive. So it was different, almost a different type of assessment. And then another thing to keep in mind, and I'll bring this back up when we look at scores, 2015, so the first year we looked at, did not include the math performance. 2016 does. So when we're comparing scores, one has that component and one doesn't. So even though we're comparing them, they're not the exact same, they weren't given the same way, they had different components. So just kind of keeping that in mind. And this is a reminder, I know you guys looked at this last year, so the different levels of the state assessment. Level one is below grade level, two, three, and four are on grade level. And they consider three and four at the rigor or the knowledge base that they would be prepared for college and career. This is as a district-wide, our ELA, so English Language Arts scores. They did take the MDPT, but we were able to, when they released the scores, they gave it to us together, and then they also separated that out. So on our report card, the MDPT is not reported. So these scores are just the computer-based ELA portion. Their report card was released last week, I believe. So this is what is on the website for our report card. So the first two are as our district, from 2015 to 2016. And the second two are the state, 15 to 16, for English Language Arts. This is third grade through, 10th grade, the tested grade levels. Orange is level one, two, three, and then blues are level four. So when we, when I started looking, just one of my takeaways, when I started looking at this, is our trends are matching the state we're starting out, like our ones are starting out higher, but ours increased, theirs increased. So overall, as the state, they said they saw ones increase, which is what ours did.
Any questions on the English Language Arts, just for us as we come up there? Or you may want us to come back to these as well?
I just had a question. How does the adaptive technology part of it? That will actually give the student different questions based on their correct or incorrect answers?
Correct.
How it looks? Like it does have an effect on the scores?
Right. And they have, we actually met with the state last week, and they talked a little bit about that, and they were still a little unclear, I don't want to say unclear on it, but they weren't as pleased with the adaptive part as they would like. Now, they, you're right, it does have some clear data that shows steps that were taken. But if you happen to have a bad day one of testing, then you're kind of out of luck for how that adapts, because it only adapts one direction based on how you answer that first set. And so you may not recover from a bad first day. And you may, I mean, you may have a great first day and, you know, and don't normally. So it can weigh both directions, but that was their concern. You have a really bad first day of testing on an adaptive test, you, you don't move up. I may not have as high a rate of questions even given to me because of my score in the first day.
But if you keep answering them correctly, it's going to keep challenging.
Yeah, it'll grow. It just may not get to, you know, if I scored down here and up here, it would be a level four. I may grow, but not even a chance to get way back up here. But as far as how that all works, I mean, I haven't really saw all that data is collected and how it judges where they're at and...
It's an interesting way to do it, but I don't know that you compare right students to each other.
And so when we're comparing our math, just remember, in 2015, that did not include the math performance piece. And then in 2016, it did. And there is no, there were reports on that, we're getting combined. So I can't break that apart. That wasn't even an option provided to us when they released them. So I don't know what percent of that, you know, was weighted on the performance and what piece was the computer-generated part. But same thing, our trends match the state overall. And this is again as a district. So last week, we had several, I don't know what that means officially, poem. Right, so the State Department came in and just met with us on a few things, and one of them happened to be test scores. So they, so we kind of talked about what we're doing right now as far as math to help address these. So some of the things we talked about was our math summit. We just finished, completed our second math summit. We did the adaptive curriculum last year, formal curriculum, K nine. The math academy that was offered this summer for 30 teachers participated. And then they're actually, I think in a board meeting this September, kind of talked about how they're taking that back to their buildings. So we talked about that. The professional development we've been bringing in. So we just kind of talked about all these different things. And they didn't really operate anything new. They kind of liked where we were starting and where we were going. And we have a long ways to go, but definitely realize this is where, you know, we want to continue to grow and get better in some of the things that we're trying to do to address that.
The state really gave us good affirmation in the direction we're heading with that curriculum, I felt. I was, I really wanted them to give us some magic bullets, which there are then. But at the same time, they, they validated the curriculum we've chosen. They like what we're doing in terms of monitoring through data collection and then the professional thought that we're offering. So I felt we're really pleased with that.
This looks a little different. So this is our science, or history government, social studies scores. These weren't released as our report card yet, and I'm not sure if that's going to happen, but I wanted, we wanted to share them. So sixth, eighth, and eleventh take, sixth grade does social studies, eighth grade does history, and then 11th grade does government. So just our district compared to the state. And some talking points on this, actually, attended a social studies session at the state conference, because we had lots of questions about this. So this is the first time in eight years that they have taken a social studies state test and gotten feedback. So they've taken them on and off, we haven't ever gotten results back. And then an issue with, the results with this have been the weighting of that MDPT. So they weighted it within here. So sixth and eighth grade, it was 25%, and 11th grade, it was 50%. So that really played a huge part in what, what the scores looked like. And then on top of that, this year, they will not give science studies. It rotates with science. And so the following year, when they give it again, the MDPT is no longer part of it. So the assessment's going to look probably completely different. So a lot of things they, we're not...
Nothing to compare this one to.
Just where we're at. So the same thing, this is level one, is that orangish red, and then two, three, and four. So if you just look at the twos, threes, and fours, which would be on level, we've got like 86, I wrote these numbers down because I knew I was going to forget them. 86% on or above, 91, and then this was the 66%, which this is where they're tested on government. And so those, several of those who haven't taken government yet, which is a statewide concern.
Do we have any people from the state who are commenting on our program in regards to history government and social studies?
Yeah, we're anxious to see if they realign any of the course sequencing there that hasn't come out yet. But we both went to the KSDE conference on it, and they really talked about relevance, good discussion and adding rigor to your social studies curriculum. We just adopted a curriculum last year that we're implementing this year. That is really, it's very rigorous. And then the, what they were sharing with us on in terms of discussion and so forth, I feel like we're doing those things. So again, we just don't have a lot of data to compare it to. The MDPT is very performance-based and a big essay portion of it. And I think we struggled a little bit with analyzing art vax and such, and then putting that into an argumentative type of persuasive essay.
So the students were expected to write an essay?
On demand.
On demand.
And then move hand scores.
So hand scores across the state, along to two graders.
So it was out of our areas somewhere.
So just when we're looking at the data, again, we need at least two, three years of data before we can start to identify those trends. And then once we can, once we have more collection of data, these are the things that hopefully we can start doing. So identifying content knowledge gaps within our grade levels, which is actually we're able to do now within our curriculum, since we have those goals with the shifts in the standards. But strengths and weaknesses at a specific grade level also, you know, if we're continually scoring lower in a certain grade level, is there, you know, we can look at what we're doing in the core, is there something we're not doing that other districts that are succeeding at that grade level? So that's, once we have more data, we can kind of start to identify those trends. And then movement in our performance levels. So maybe our ones are growing at a faster, or our ones, but maybe our twos are growing at a faster rate than our threes, you know, so looking at that. Or maybe our fours aren't going as fast as we would like, but it's comparison to everyone in the district. So just our growth in the certain levels. We want our twos, threes, especially our threes and fours, to grow. So looking at the rate, but again, we kind of, we can start to do that. So these are some of the shifts in the way we've looked at state assessments before. So No Child Left Behind, which we've switched to, the Every Student Succeeds, kind of made an imbalance, did I say that right? Sorry. Kind of created imbalance in our education system. So our assessments became high stakes. So on that old assessment, if you're familiar with it, I could give an assessment. In my entire class, I can identify which kid which missed, which, missed which standard, and then I could teach that specific skill to that, that group of kids. So I can really narrow down which skills they were missing, which it's not bad to teach those skills, but we kind of got, I don't know, we should bump certain things. So with this new assessment and the way we get results and the way it's designed, we can't really do that if we kind of look at the whole students. So, so we're basically, we kind of have to change the way we're looking at, or alter the way we're looking at assessments and how we're going to use them for our district. And then the state, you know, with the vision and outcomes that they'd like, that they're moving forward with. And so for us to continue moving forward with that, we want to shift the way we look. And Ashley, Renee's going to use these in her next presentation.
Yeah, I'm actually going to be talking about the accreditation system. And it act, it also matches up with this, because Kansas wants to lead the world in the success of each student, and they've set forth a vision. And that vision is academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, employability, skills, and civic engagement to be successful. And nowhere in there does it say high stakes testing. Now, having good results will help all of these areas, but it isn't the be-all, end-all measurement that it used to be. And in order to achieve, achieve the goals of cognitive preparation, academic skills and so forth, we're looking at these five state outcomes. Kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, high school graduation rates, post-secondary completion attendance, and social emotional growth, which will be measured locally. So essentially, if our students are succeeding with social emotional growth, hopefully they're going to perform better academically. If they're ready when they leave kindergarten, that should be a good predictor of how they do them in first grade, second grade, third grade. So all of these outcomes will hopefully affect the outcomes of any type of assessment we were to give in our district, not just the state assessment.
So with those shifts in mind, so this is kind of, again, how we're changing our mindset about the state assessments. It's just one tool in the many that we have to, to gauge a student's academic performance. It's just one snapshot of that student that one day. So we're looking at this data point as a data point. So we need to focus on the needs of the whole child, the outcomes she listed, so just not focusing on one. And then it's really putting the focus back on the child educator being the best resource to gauge a student's readiness. And then so with all of these in mind, they looked at how much time we're actually spending testing. I mean, those first two full slides were just the assessments we gave last year. So if we're saying it's just one, one point, one day, one score, then the way we're giving these assessments and the amount of assessments we're giving and the time that we're spending on the assessments needs to match that. So they have reduced the footprint for this year for state assessments because of that. This is how our state assessments will change for this year. So math are going from four, and then they have that math performance piece, they'll be taking two. The first one will be that fixed, where they're all taking the same level, and the second will look adaptive. That performance piece has moved to an optional, optional interim. It's a resource that they can access on KSDE if they choose to still utilize that resource. So we're cutting our time in half as far as how many minutes we're spending testing, over half. ELA, same thing, we're going from four to two. And the performance piece, so the MDPT, is again moved to an optional interim. And then science is going from three to two. And I know you can't read all this, I just kind of put this up there to, to share that we are doing science this year. We will not do social studies. There is, and then they also take the DLM, which is an alternative assessment for special education students, and that's ongoing, not lasts all year. And then the KALPA, they will take as well, our ELA will take.
Any questions about the reduction in the amount of testing and results or anything you share? It's a lot. It can be overwhelming, especially when we don't know a lot. But I think that is a good thing. It's forcing us to shift, it's forcing me, I know, to shift my mindset, not having the information we used to have. I don't think that's a bad thing.
How will social emotional, what was it, for the outcomes?
Social emotional skills to be measured locally. So we're waiting on some guidance from the state, but like, for example, this year, we're required to do one hour of training on the Jason Flack Act, which is suicide awareness. We do bullying harassment training. MTSS does offer some behavioral screeners that measures some social emotional outcomes. So we're getting some guidance there, but that's something we will be adding. CHAMP covers that a little bit when you're looking at behavior data, referral data, toward data, attendance data, that all falls into the social emotional outcome.
Yes.
How was that? I'm trying to figure out the best phrase, I think it's a phrase, this. I know one time my husband had a test, and he was giving his sixth graders, and there was a series of questions about the law school, which probably most of the kids in his class at where he was since did not know or have, or, well, they may have known where the law school was, but didn't have a concept really. So a bunch of his kids missed the series of questions. The assessment that we have now, is that try and take into consideration the diversity that we have in Kansas? Or if it's, I mean, if there is a series of those questions the first day, and that person doesn't know what that one word is?
Yeah. We think that the testing process probably still has some biases. We can't prove that, or we don't have the data to drill down that says so. But when we look at our MDPT results, especially the social studies, and, and one of the questions, which we're not actually allowed to share, that's a breach of confidentiality with the State Department and their testing. But we looked at that question and thought, if they don't remember or have not been exposed to that concept, and they're expected to relay it to real life, it's nearly an impossible task. And we have a lot of no scores. So to answer your question, I believe so. I believe there are still a lot of biases, but I don't have the, the data to prove that.
I might add to that. I don't know that there's any definitive data yet, but there are two groups, HART and Smarter Balance, that developed tests for states. Those were the two big ones. You might remember a few years ago, Kansas was kind of poised to choose Smarter Balance, and in the bottom of the night, decided to do our own. I think the state's belief at this point is that our Kansas assessment is significantly more rigorous than what Smarter Balance or HART do. But again, that at some point will, I'm sure, be borne out with somebody's dissertation project to, to look at that and, and make a determination on it. Not, it won't be Mr. Hogan's joke.
Not mine.
But, but it is new, you know, and that's, that's one of the things, I think, if we remember back, when No Child Left Behind was passed under President Bush in the early 2000s, we, we didn't know much about assessing kids, about how to use data, and our scores really weren't where we wanted them to be when we first started out. Well, after 10 or 11 years of doing that, we got pretty good at it, but we weren't there when we first started. And that's the kind of learning curve we're going through again, because this isn't just like adopting a different textbook. This is a whole new way to do this. It's a whole new system. It's a whole new way to use this information. And some of the things we're used to doing with assessments for some of our staff members, it's kind of frustrating because they don't have the capability. The system is not designed to allow us to do the same things. So if we're having to go back and relearn, how can we use that data most effectively to help through our, through our programs and our students forward?
I think, so this is just an idea of what a balanced assessment system would look like, so what this is going to look like for our district. We're still in the process of working on. However, so basically, formative assessments and formative tools, we would like to use basically year-round. So the majority of the data we collect on kids is from within our classroom, and that looks different ways. Maybe it's a conference I had with them, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's an exit ticket, maybe it's the type of questions, you know, the Q and A I have. So, so constantly collecting data on those students throughout the year. So I think a lot of our teachers are already doing this, but they do offer an assessment literacy training or program is coming out with the state, and the guy that is in charge of that starts in December. And so I have his contact information, and we'd like to do some, it's basically, it's called assessment literacy, so talking about what types of assessments are meant for what, how you use that data. So this is going to take some PD from, coming from us with our teachers, so they, they understand what type of assessments, what a formative assessment looks like and how I use that data. And then the interim assessments, we are piling an interim assessment from, they released an interim assessment pilot this year with the state, and then we gave the options to our building principals if they would like to participate or not. And then they asked teachers, so teachers have the option to participate or not. We have a total, I think, about 87 teachers participating, so we've got a sample from every grade level that does test, participating. And those are more of, kind of like checkpoints, point assessments. So after I teach this skill, I can do an interim test on that skill. So those would be, and I can also use that to drive my instruction. So that rolls out actually this week. We're working on our training for that. And then the summative would be our in-state assessment. So one point of data, an overall look at our district, how we're doing, where are our trends? So basically, if we're doing all these formives and these interims, by the time we get to the assessment, it shouldn't be a surprise, it should match what we're already doing. If our core's strong and we're continually doing this, then we should start to see those gains. So it's not, so we're not focusing, that's not the end all say. We've got all this data on these students, and so hopefully our summative matches. If it doesn't match, then we can start looking at, is that a bad day? I have the data to prove that that was just a bad day. That's an outlier score. So I'm, I'm definitely excited that we're going to go this direction and whatnot. It'll be a process, but it'll be a good process.
So the formative and interim is developed globally, classroom branch?
The interims right now are developed from the state. That's, it's on KITE, our cut testing platform. The formatives, they do have some that they have created that are available. I think hit and miss different grade levels, hit and miss different skills. So they're working on developing those, but I don't think that they're going to cover every skill.
We, we're lacking a systematic way to do formative assessment, where we measure, monitor, and report student progress. And that's going to be Crystal's job, but us supporting her in helping that. And formatives are not formal. They're the day-to-day ways that you assess your students that help you to drive instruction. And it's just getting teachers to be conscientious about what those strategies are and how they're measuring student progress. Are they asking everyone in the class questions or only certain students? Are they having groups work together facilitating what those groups look like and who's getting the concepts and who's not? So it's just systematically measuring on a day-to-day basis how students are doing in class.
So that's, our PD's going to be big on that, because it's going to look different in every single classroom. So teachers really need to understand why we're doing it and the type of data they're going to get from it, how to use that. So I can't roll out these five formatives, use them, because it's not, you know, it's not going to apply to every single classroom or every single situation. So we can offer resources and how to use those and make up the year, but that's going to definitely take some...
But our teachers are going to be able to get more results that they can use from the formative and the interim assessment?
Correct.
Because it seems to me, from what you've said, that the summative assessment has limited utility at the local level. It may have a lot of information at some other level, but it's not here.
Exactly right.
And it seems like the best thing about it is that it's a lot shorter in future.
Yeah, so we're saying it's just one data point, but we were spending weeks on it and giving it. So they've really matched the time we spend to the, I mean, this is where we want to spend all our time.
But maybe shifting more of the assessment process to the local level gives us more information about our students rather than depending on some assessment once a year that we get results way too late to really be useful, even if they are more specific.
That's exactly right.
As a parent, I appreciate the reduction, because I actually opted both of my boys out last year. This year, I'm only going to opt out one. But it was crazy going back and forth, like, because I didn't want them just sitting around doing nothing in school. Not that they'd be doing nothing, they'd have something for them to do. But, you know, the amount of time that went into those tests was just insane.
The feedback they got from teachers and statewide was, this is too much, this is too much. And so they listened and definitely reduced, I think by 60, overall 60%, which is great.
So when it said 2016 and then 2017 on that prior slide, it was, it was the spring of 2016 that they were referring to, not, not this 2016?
No, so the year is like the spring.
That was...
So this, this year, so the spring of 2000, this is the year.
So we're looking at half or less of it?
Yes, they've cut it over half, 60%.
They can maybe do that again.
Definitely exciting. I don't, I don't think I've heard of one teacher that was upset by that. So...
And if you look at this slide, which you can't see that well, I mean, our testing window doesn't open until March, it opened in February last year.
Yeah, we were testing starting... Yeah, we were testing starting, like, February.
Right.
So, this is after spring break, our window's a lot shorter.
But it looks like the bulk of what, what we need to know, we're moving forward and we're closer to the classroom.
You may have said, I'm sorry if I didn't catch it, but why aren't they doing history and government, why aren't they doing that?
They do it every other year.
Is there a reason behind that?
I haven't heard of one. I think, actually, about the tests. So, we alternate those two, more subjects, every other year, science and social studies. And I know that it's pretty much an overhaul of what the last social studies one, so they probably need this year to rewrite it. I'm assuming that's why this was the year we're doing social study, or science and not social studies. Yeah.
That may parallel federal law. I think the federal law specifically how much they have to test, and so I think it's probably to match that.
Any other questions? All right, well, if you have any, you can email Crystal.
I just wanna compliment Crystal. This is Crystal's first year here in the central office, and one of the gaps we identified last year was with the changes in the assessment system. We're just really having enough time to really be able to dig into it. And it's not, again, it's not just an autopilot kind of thing, it's really starting over. It's new understandings. We really want a quality system for our, for our teachers and for our students. So, she's doing a great job, and she's got, you know, a huge learning curve there, that she's, she's jumping in, and there's a lot of moving parts that are the state's doing, that we, you know, have to, have to understand what they're doing, and it's not a completed system. That commercial that they used to show with the airplane flying, people were building it in the air, there's a little bit of that going on with the assessment system in the state level. So, Crystal's done a great job, and Crystal, I want to thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Kansas education system, I'm gonna repeat these state board vision and outcomes, but our new accreditation system is built around these foundations that the state board has given. And I will say, I've been in Kansas fourteen or so years, and this is the first time I have a clear understanding of where our state is going. I think Commissioner Watson has just made, putting his vision and outcomes and goals out there. Every meeting you have, he repeats what these are. He wants you to know that this is the direction the state is moving, and we're all going to move there together. Again, he wants successful graduates to have academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, employability skills, and civic engagement. So, last year, the board, the state board of education passed a new accreditation system. And a little history on the accreditation system, it used to be, one or two people wrote up a plan, and each building was responsible for being accredited as a building. And after the accreditation team said yay, the plan usually went on a shelf somewhere, and no one ever referred to it again. And so, one of the, the main changes in this accreditation plan is it's a five-year systemic cycle, and it's a district-wide accreditation system. So, all of our schools will have common goals that we're working on, and then we'll have an evaluation team that determines if we're meeting those goals. That's a huge change, and it is a living document, I'll talk about that a little bit more. So, if in year one you meet a goal, you add a new goal, and it's, and you keep working, you don't just quit, which is how it should be. This is called the zero year of accreditation, so all schools in the state will be counted as accredited this year, and they get to start preparing for the real process, which will begin next year. And so, this year, as far as where we are in our district, all principals have been updated in terms of understanding the system and the changes from the old, the old system of QPA to this. Building staff and their building leadership teams have been looking through the rubrics, and I think last year, when I presented to you all, I showed you the different rubrics that the state is looking at to do accreditation. And then, we have trained all of our buildings in a program called Kansas Star, and it's just a way to track and monitor your progress as you build a building improvement plan. And that's how this becomes a living document, because Leanne, or Dr. Carlin, or the building principal, or members of the building leadership team, they can all get on and look at this plan at any time, and refer to the plan, and see the progress that's being made. So, it doesn't just go on a shelf. It's actively, at every meeting, you pull up the plan in the program, and you add to it, and you keep your minutes. And right now, all buildings are creating their plans, or if they have a plan, they're updating them, and the expectation is, building improvement plans will be ready for full implementation next school year. We still have yet to have what's called a district leadership team, which will be our curriculum council slash MTSS. The state is asking that the accreditation district leadership teams meet at least twice a year, once each semester. And in zero year, they're just gonna be learning about the accreditation process, and they'll start to review building improvement plans, and decide the direction that the, that the district wants to take in terms of a district plan. And then there will also be a district site council, and that will be an invite to members of all school site councils to come and learn about accreditation, provide input into what's happening in the community, and how that can affect or influence goals that the district has. I will continue to go to these quarterly updates that the state is having, to ensure we're kind of on the right track during zero year. And then, at the end of the third quarter, or beginning of the fourth quarter, we get to determine, determine what year of implementation our district is in the process. Remember, this is a five-year process, but they can't have everyone start year one across the state, or the validation teams would be in five years in a rut. So, we get to evaluate what year we feel we are, we are achieving at the end of this school year, and that will be a decision that the building leadership team makes as well with input and help from central office. And this is kind of a visual of year one, two, three, four, and five in the process. Where I think we are in terms of what our schools are doing, we are probably somewhere actively doing years one and two, and you probably can't see this very well, but I did send this to you, so you have a better view. But right now, in year two, would be the implementation of building improvement plans, and that's where I hope us to be next year. So, we have a pretty good foundation as a district, and we have pockets of strengths and weaknesses in terms of, of the KISA process, but I'm hoping by the end of the year, we'll be a little more evened out in what we're doing. But you can see, all these little buildings are representations of the stakeholders. You've got the school building, the next little group of people is the building site council, the big building is the district office or district team, the little five-people wheel is the school board, we have what's called an outside validation team, and those will be team members trained by the state. We can, we will have some options, such as state MTSS teams, Sublet, the service center might provide a team. We can create our own team, but it can't be anyone from within our district, it would have to be, perhaps we have some neighboring districts that have been trained in the process that we wanna invite to help evaluate their district. And then, Mr. Hogan shared this with me. He just went to a conference where a district did a crosswalk of the state board outcomes, what a successful graduate looks like, how it would align with the rubrics, the foundational structures, and the Rose standards. Because what happens is, when you say we're going to do accreditation, teachers think that's one more thing we have to do. But actually, this crosswalk shows, we're already doing these, how do they relate? How can we disseminate how parent involvement is a part of the state board outcomes, as well as a part of the Rose standards? So, this just breaks it down. I won't go through all those, but there were two pages of that. So, that is the end of zero year quarter two. I'll probably give one more key to update at the end of this year, as we determine where we are in the rating. But do you have any questions?
I'm really excited, because one of the rubrics is results, and will be, our results will be measured according to those state board outcomes, in regard readiness, college, and post-secondary education, graduation rate, social, emotional, learning. So, nowhere is a state assessment listed as a be-all and all result in accreditation, and that's really exciting. Any questions?
Well, it's been, it's really interesting, though, it seems like there's so much change in how it goes, how it goes now, and you're all doing a great job trying to keep up with everything. It's been a good one. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I think the next one is school finance. Last time, we shared, Kayden and I shared with you kind of the outline that we had put together, school funding principles, and invited you to share the feedback, and did period, other than a couple of affirmations that kind of looked along the lines of what was thought would be appropriate, but certainly open if there's feedback tonight. But the deadline to submit to the state is November thirty, and I think this is the last formal meeting that the board will have, so if there's not anything that you would like to change, the board would, I suggest a motion to adopt this, and that we could submit that. If the board does choose to adopt something tonight, I will share that with Alan, and Amber, and Kieran, and Lila, and if they're interested in jointly signing off on it, their communities will submit it, or multiple communities. If not, then we'll just submit those ours. Really open for conversation.
Well, I looked at it, and I thought it was very, it was a very good job establishing what it's supposed to be, and she was, it was, it was, I didn't know. I just see two bullet points that you might wanna edit. I should have emailed earlier. On adequacy, bullet three, and then bullet five, I think it should be either fully funded or full funding, not fully funded.
Which do you prefer?
Or fully funded.
So, that means you fully fund all the kindergarten, and fully fund the law for special education?
Sounds good. I think that we adopt the school funding principles as, is there a second? Open discussion. I'll beg your permission. And at this point, we're moving on to open discussion. I have a couple of things. One, just as a reminder, Crystal Apple is Thursday, and we have five incredible nominees from Garden City who will be there, so if you're able to be there at six o'clock at the point I am, that would be great to support him. And then, also, just so you know, I'm being named as a nominee or candidate for the region to be vice president for the Kansas Association of School Boards, so I will be on the ballot in December, so we'll see where that goes. Hope I, if you're there, hope you'll support me.
For sure.
You called me into it, so. Well, that's an important position, and I really like to see that, I think, that it's really important to have a district like ours, and our area in general represented well, because we're very different from many of the other areas in Kansas. I need a really strong and vocal person to support that. And I know that you've worked at Topeka, and you've done other things, so I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else? I think, go ahead.
I've got a couple things. First, just to piggyback on that, we're really lucky. The Kansas Association of School Boards really does great work, and the reason, in part, that they're able to do that is because they're made up of great school board members from across the state. But as I talk to superintendents from other states, they don't all have the luxury of having an organization like KASB. I would add to that, KSDE, as our state department, does a phenomenal job also, so, but it takes people to get involved, and as Joanne mentioned earlier, there's no pay for that job either, which Laura's keenly aware of, just like there's no pay for your services as school board members, but it is much appreciated, and it does make a big difference in the, in the way or the quality of education that our kids receive. If you are interested in attending the Crystal Apple banquet, let me know, 'cause we're in the process of finalizing and getting some tickets for people. And this is American Education Week, so we wanna thank all of our educators across the community, and for the contributions that they make to the education of our youth in, in Garden City. Wednesday, we will be delivering some healthy snacks. So, if anybody's available Wednesday morning to maybe just deliver baskets to two or three buildings, if you can work that into your schedule, we would appreciate it. If you would call Joanne or Teresa tomorrow and let them know if you can help out, we'd certainly love to have you involved. Rotary, the Rotary Club in Garden City is delivering dictionaries to all third graders this week. That's something that they have a long, long, long tradition of doing, and so that's pretty cool. They're out in all of the elementary schools, delivering those, and they spend some of their, their year raising money, there's no cost to the kids to do that, that's, that's all paid by the Rotary Club, and so they're excited about that. And then, the last thing is a little bit of sad note. We received word over the weekend that Robert Hubbard, Robert was a AV repairman in our, in our maintenance department. He passed away, he lost a battle with pancreatic cancer. His, his wife is a teacher in the district, so please keep their family and their thoughts and prayers, they're going through a tough time. And I think Robert was fifty-nine years old, so, but sorry to end on a sad note, but I certainly wanna recognize Robert for his service in the district, and we're sorry for the circumstances he was passing down.
I actually remember Rotary, we're having, we did, me, Dave Grant gave out some checks last, or that last week, to some of our schools.
I think that might be right, and I'm my expert on all that, it's not here tonight, so. I know that, 'cause I know the grant, the foundation was out handing out checks, and I think Kiwanis was doing that too. So, I'll do a little checking on that data, and we'll share that at the next one, 'cause we wanna recognize the community for their, their contributions, their extra contributions.
That's a really nice to have so many people that are interested in education and supporting kids.
And I just wanna encourage you guys to do what's available to help deliver the healthy snacks on Wednesday morning, because it's kind of fun to walk into a school with a big basket of healthy snacks. You're always welcome in schools when you bring food.
These aren't, these aren't, you have that basket, right?
Sure they are, they're healthy. Chocolate's good for you, not to give people a tree. Especially on, also good for your teeth. Well, and there was a new article that said eating chocolate will make you smarter. Was this good?
Hey, we're good on everything.
And just another note to- And just another note to think about, the National School Board Association meeting is in Denver, this year in March, and that really would be an opportunity to maybe get to that where it's reasonably close to us. And I know you had expressed some interest in it, but if anyone else is interested, this is, I, I've been to this in DC several times, and it's very informative. It, it really deals a lot more with the legislative aspect of it.
What date? It's late March.
Yeah, March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, so twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seventh. So that would be after Supreme Court.
If, if you're interested with safety, would you let us know maybe by Friday or next week? And that way, for those that are interested, we can, we're working on getting hotel arrangements and things like that, but it's, because I'm pretty sure we're going to have at least one, we're number one of the ten, but if there's, it'd be great to, to see several in the third.
Well, that's a.
It's a weekend.
Yeah, it's a weekend, so it might even be a little bit easier to, but I'm sure that hotels will be available. But they have great speakers, but they haven't released a, a, a share. Any mail? At this point, we have an executive session for, oh. Next board meetings will be Monday, December fifth at six P M. in this building. And then how long does every executive session?
I'd say forty minutes.
Forty minutes? Madam President, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in a closed session, it might invade the privacy of this discuss for a period of forty minutes, beginning at seven fifteen P M. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
We'll do yours first.
Madam President, I would like to recuse myself from the first portion of the.
No, we'll do, we'll do what you can be involved in first.
Well, why don't I do that? Because I have to stay to be the adjourned, so why don't we do mine?
Okay.
The one I have to recuse myself from first. It's okay.